If you'd like to speak during public comments tonight, there is a sign up sheet at the back table. And please, if you have your comments written down, I'd like to have a copy of those. And we'll get started shortly.
At this time, I would like to call the September, I should put my mic a little closer, my September, I'll put the mic closer and say that it's September 8th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all have the board agenda before you. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda presented to us this evening.
So moved.
Second, Bernice.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. We have the minutes of the August 18th, 2021 Board of Education, presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved. Noelani?
Noelani. Second.
Second, Bernice.
Bernice. Okay. Any additional, any additions, corrections, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. We now have privilege of the floor, and we have two people signed up. I have the first person, Dana Story. Dana, any, either of these two places?
Is it working? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I'm not, I don't do a lot of public speaking, but I thought that it was important that I at least come and talk on behalf of my children. My name is Dana Story. They will be attending first grade at Zaller, starting tomorrow. My concern with returning in-person learning, and my, I guess the question that I have is the rush to get it done before they're able to be vaccinated. The kids ranging from pre-K to 11 are not eligible for that currently, but there is talks of it becoming available at the end of September, early October, potentially. And I just feel like as a parent, you know, we are supposed to protect our children, and I'm not able to do that. I really feel uncomfortable with sending them back to school. In the interim, I also understand the importance of them being there and in the classroom, and moving forward with the classroom once the vaccine is available, even if they just got the first vaccination before they started back in person. My daughter does have asthma. They were premature twins. They both have been extremely lucky and very healthy. COVID is a hazardous infectious disease, and I work in healthcare. I've cared for these patients over the last 18 months. It's just risky, and it's concerning as a parent, and the responsibility there. We, the district can't keep the common cold out of a classroom on a, on any given year. My kids are always sick. They're like a little Petri dish, and then I'm sick. I just, I don't understand, and then with the decrease in staffing with cleaning, you know, at the last board meeting that was brought up, and that's concerning to me. There should be no building that's opened unless you have the appropriate staff to be able to clean adequately at night, because the only way to decrease the spread of germs is by cleaning. There are major children's hospitals that cannot accommodate the patients, especially children, in Texas. I'm sure everyone has seen that on the TV. We have, I work at one of the bigger hospitals in the area. We have one floor designated to children. On the magnitude that we could see, and yes, it might only be 5%, but for this district to lose any child is far too many. It's too many. And I, I hope for myself it's not mine. I have a three-year-old baby that won't even be eligible for vaccination, and I think that there's a misconception about vaccination. Vaccination doesn't eliminate sickness. What it does is it prevents the severity of the symptoms of COVID-19 within the person. And I think until that's understood, it's very easy, and trust me, if I hadn't been on these floors and I hadn't seen more death over the last two years, I have never in my life, I've been in healthcare for 20-plus years, I've never seen the type of death that I've seen, but there are actively kids on ventilators in our area that have COVID. That's how real that condition is. It's, it's hands down, it's unbelievable, and it's the worst thing that's ever happened to our country. And I think as educated individuals, you have to make the right choice for kids. 12 and up, they're vaccinated. If they chose not to become vaccinated, you know, hopefully they don't become ill from it, but my kids at six, I'm sending them to school without a vaccination. And I know some people don't even believe in vaccination, and that's fine, let their kids go to school. I just don't understand why until that can take place, we can't do virtual, even in the classroom setup that they have. One of my kids is special education, and trust me, he needs to be in a classroom. I understand that. I cannot provide the level of educational assistance that he needs in my living room. It was disastrous this last year. But when I weigh the odds of his education and being, lacking maybe these last two years versus a lifetime of him not being with me, and I'm not talking, you know, a rare occurrence that could happen, I am sending, and my dad said to me the other day, it's not when my child will become ill this year. It's not if he will, it's when he will contract COVID, because it will happen. It will happen in large groups, numbers of kids. So that's my concern. My concern is, and I don't feel like we're doing everything that we possibly can in the district, because we could do virtual at home until vaccination is available for these children, even if it's their first dose, three weeks after it's given, and then put them into the classrooms where they're designated. The only other thing that I wanted to say is that my kid was in enrichment this summer, and hospitals, long-term care facilities and hospitals, all were to have masked individuals, right, within a building. If you were outside, you didn't have to have a mask on. That was not occurring at my kid's site. The other thing is that there were pictures that came about where they had costumes and face masks associated with those costumes, and they were sharing those, not only my kids, but other kids. And I mean, it was the whole outfit. I was angry about it, because I put my child's safety in the responsible hands of the district, the school. And my kid did get sick the last week of school, and I had to take her and get a COVID test, and it was three days out of school. There are a lot of families that are working that can't afford three days off of work. Employers are going away from, even the employer I work for, allowing me to be home with my kids, whether for any reason. It's going to force parents to medicate their child, send them, and a fever-reducing medication given at 8:00 in the morning won't wear off until 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. Then they've infected everybody in that classroom, probably unintentionally, but it could still happen. These are, and, and like I said, common flu, common cold, that's how it all spreads. So if it wasn't so risky, I wouldn't be concerned, but I am definitely afraid to send my kids back to school tomorrow. Eyes haven't even been addressed with the spread of COVID. It's a droplet disease. If you don't have your eyes, I mean, this is a major source of transmission. I have, I look like an astronaut when I work at work now. That's what I look like. And my eyes are covered, and we're not using face shields. And I get it, we have this mask on, but that's also questionable. Do, you know, adults can't even use it correctly or not touch it. You're constantly pulling up, and, and my kids, they don't know to wash their hands, and unless an adult is on top of them for washing their hands every so many minutes, those germs are spread all over the place. And we can't go to six feet, and even at six feet, you're still able to contract COVID. It can go over an aisle at a grocery store from somebody unmasked coughing and sneezing. I just, there's just a lot of concerns I have with sending my kids back tomorrow. I also asked the district who will be responsible for my child if something were to happen to them, especially given the fact that I don't want to send them back to school, but there's no other option. And myself and my husband, however much I really want to be a teacher and teach my children and be in that line of education, I'm not. And so it's hard, it's definitely hard to teach at home, so doing homeschooling isn't really an option either. So I thank you for any consideration of my concerns that you have on behalf of all of the children that will be going back to Schenectady School District this year.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Felicia Tr, Felicia Chandler?
I just like to start by thanking some of the teachers. First of all, I'd like to start with Zola Elementary. I'd like to thank Mrs. Gilenci, Amanda Gilenci, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Burke for all the care they've given to my son who's attention deficit. They were very positive and very uplifting to him. And also, I'd like to thank Woodland Elementary School, Mrs. Christman, who was a great help to Joshua when he was there. And I would also like to thank Paige, not Paige, Howe Elementary School for giving the parents a thinking note for being teachers this last year, and I really appreciate that. And my, my concern is that my son Joshua, I have twin boys, Joshua and Isaiah, they are going to go into separate two different schools, and I will, I, I know Michelle spoke to me, one of the secretaries at the main office, say he's on a waiting list. Isaiah, I would, it would be a great less hardship on me if they both go to the same school. I understand that it's tough, you know, with teaching and how many kids you should have in the class. And I think that would be a help to Joshua, who's ADHD, or Isaiah, even in a different class, because Isaiah helps Joshua a lot. And I did have a very good talk with Yaseh Elementary Principal, Robert Flanders, I think his name was. He was very down-to-earth and very cares about the parents' concerns. And I just wanted to say that, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Those are all the people I have signed up at the moment, so we will move to superintendent comments.
Yeah, my comments will be brief. I do have an update to the board, a presentation more formal with some comments, but I do want to make mention that tomorrow's the first day of school. We had our final superintendent's conference day today, a lot of energy, a lot of positive energy from the staff, so I'll go more into those details in the presentation. And tonight, you'll be approving some board resolutions of new personnel. We do have some folks in attendance, so when we get to that point, do want to make sure that we can honor those individuals as well. So I'll save the rest of my comments for the official update.
Thank you. Okay, board members. Princella.
I'm also brief. I just want to welcome everybody back tomorrow, and I know we're going to have a successful year. We have a great team of new and old, so I look forward to our students growing and learning throughout this year.
Thank you, Princella.
That's it.
Sorry. Erica?
Thanks, Kathy, I didn't go first tonight.
I rotated.
No, well, of course, it's Board Meeting Day, which is the best say. We're all here together. And honestly, just happy first day of school to everyone, admin, teachers, and especially the students and parents. It's, you know, it's going to be hard going back, especially for the kids who haven't been back yet, but just all remembering, it takes a village, taking care of each other, being patient with each other, and happy first day of school.
Excellent. Noelani?
I also wanted to welcome the students back to school tomorrow. I am excited. My daughter is starting the sixth grade, so she is very excited, and I'm cautiously happy. I know it's been a long road for many of us as parents to see our kids get back into schools, so I am hoping, you know, for the best here. With that being said, I also wanted to thank the teachers, the staff, everyone that's in the buildings that's going to help our children, you know, reengage, to connect again with their teachers, their peers, their friends, people that they've missed. I know that it's been a very long time. I believe it is Teacher Appreciation Month, and if I'm wrong, please forgive me, but I did want to say thank you to everyone that's going to be out there working with our students and getting them reacclimated.
Every month is Teacher Appreciation Month. Thank you. Jamaica?
Sure. First, I actually want to talk about the new teacher orientation. I got to attend, was super excited, because it's my first time going to the fancy breakfast, and to see how many people were in that space, coming into our district, committed to our children, as well as some returning graduates. So it wasn't just, you know, oh, there's new teachers. It was people coming back home to our district, which was really great, and of course, it was also our new orientation for Anibal, which was welcome again. Yeah, it's the first day of school. I, I mean, it's, it's all of the things, right? So really exciting, especially to the community groups and organizations that have spent weeks getting school supplies to our students. There are a number of organizations inside and outside of Schenectady that have directly put backpacks and pencils directly into hands of families. I want to say thank you to Schenectady School District for printing out copies of our reopening plan and committing to making sure we get that information directly to parents any way that we can, and just for us to continue the partnerships that have already begun, because it takes all of us to ensure our children are successful.
Thank you. Bernice?
Good evening. I also attended the new teacher orientation, and a lot of things that were said, I was going to say, but I do want to share that the, it was very powerful to see the new teachers that are coming into our district. They were passionate, they were very excited, and it was great to hear the new, the, the Teacher of the Year sharing some strategies and tips to really become and be that catalyst for change. And one of the simple things that the person said was joy, you know, having joy for your job, having joy for the kids, having joy for the community. It was very, it was very well done. And again, thank you for all the staff for putting that together. It was so smooth, so nice, and you can feel the welcoming in that room. It was great. It was really great. And that's 100 teachers, right? 100 staff members that were hired, so I thought that was great. Yesterday, I attended the Family Day at Scala. It was amazing. And it actually touches on a lot of things that we've been talking about even this afternoon in a session that we were in, but I'll start with Scala, I don't know if people have been there lately, but we have a new gym floor. It is amazing. I don't know if people have seen the gym prior to this new gym that I was installed, I believe, in June. It is beautiful, and this may not sound like a lot, but it is. The floor was a mess, the curtains were ripped, they had holes. Now we have a beautiful blue curtain. It's gorgeous. Then they're going to have a sound system in there very soon. They're going to have the projector coming out of the, the ceiling. It was just exciting, because I've been, I taught at Scala years ago, but, and I've been to Scala, but I haven't been there since the new changes were made. They also have an area where they're going to have a parent lounge, I call it a parent lounge, but it's a parent-community center, where they're going to provide materials in there for the parents. They're ordering in the near future sofas and a TV. They're also going to have a lot of the college paraphernalia all around that room. One of the teachers there, Molly Slavniak, and I apologize if I mispronounce her last name, she actually reached out to colleges all across the country. She had approximately 180 colleges that responded and sent her materials. I thought that was amazing. She, they also have a woman, and some of you may know her, Maxine Perisport, who's a teacher, but she's outside of the district, and she does a lot of the FASA, she does a FASA training once a year for the parents there, so that the parents know how to go about applying for financial aid. And all these things are free for the community. It was amazing. I mean, I can go on and on, and I will go on a little bit more. I also, so the event was actually organized by the Parent Action Committee, and the teachers, there were several teachers and staff in general, not just teachers, teachers, paras that were part of the organizing of the event, and I do want to shout them out. It's Molly, and again, I apologize if I mispronounce last names, but Molly Slavniak, Elaine Berlenti, Laura Mercy, who was one of our Teachers of the Year, Andy Yocler, Bill Pickett, Colleen Coslin, Will Randall, Cassandra Williams, Jen Drake, and there were other, there were other staff, and some of them are in this room, that also attended the event, and there were others that are not in this room that attended the event. There were families there, there were students that I spoke with, and then going back to what we talked about, I think at the last board meeting, where we have many students that come back, start businesses, are doing a lot of great things in Schenectady because of the education they had here in Schenectady. I do want to mention a few people. So we had the Mediation Matters, which I know a lot of people in the room know, that that's a program that we have here. The peer mediation coordinator is Morales Colanzo, and she actually is a Schenectady graduate. The other folks that were there, they had a booth. The other folks that were there that are also Schenectady graduates are Monique Wade, Adonis Richards, and I'll talk a little bit more about him, and Jerian Foster. In addition to the mediation matters or peer mediation, and they talk a lot more about that, and I won't get into it, into it, but it's a great program that we have that also really lends to our restorative practice and why it is so powerful and needed for our students. But the other piece is that there was another group called Be a Leader, BALL. And BALL is a youth center group dedicated to embracing and nourishing the leadership within all young people. So Jerian Foster is the leader or the organizer of the group, and she had some students there, and I actually, I talked to some of the students and asked them, you know, what is it about BALL that you love? And one of the things that they say, and I'm paraphrasing, they said it much better than I do, than I'm about to say, but they have a voice, and they're able to help their community and lead their community in ways that make changes into their communities, and I thought it was really powerful. Many of the people that I mentioned previously are also part of BALL. And again, these are Schenectady graduates. I do want to also mention two more people that are part of that group, and it was Jalisa, and I don't have her name right here, her last name, but Jalisa was also part of the organizing with Jerian Foster. I also wanted to mention Adonis Richards. He has a book, he has written a poetry book and also a quarantine book as well. It's called Wrote the Quarantine Chronicles and Confessions of a Hopeless Creator, or Creator, or Create Creature. That book, the second book, is all about SEL, and we're talking a lot about social-emotional learning, and he really poured his heart out into this poetry and this book. And he also wrote The Quarantine Chronicles, and if I, I hope I have this correctly, during the year of COVID, he, you know, he had written a lot of the things that he was feeling or things that the community and his fellow peers were really thinking about during that, and he put all of that in a book, and it's on Amazon, he said. So just throwing it out there. But again, these are our students, who are now adults, who are giving back to the community who, who went through Schenectady schools and see the value of how they need to give back. And that is part of what the community has instilled in them, their families, but also Schenectady City Schools. So I wanted to share that. I did also want to mention, going back to Steyments again, too, that they have an event called Trunk, and Trunk or Treat, and actually, this is BALL. This is Jerian's organization, Trunk or Treat, at the Jerry Burrell Park on October 31st from 6:00 to 9:00. And that's for all, you know, for the community to come out. Steyments has a College Day with EOP and HOP from 1:00 to 4:00 on December 1st. So that's the other thing I wanted to mention. And again, Steyments is a school, or Scala is a school that sometimes we don't think about or talk about, but it's a school that, when you, you know, we went to the Family Day yesterday, the students were there, they were happy, they were involved, it was great to see the community folks there. So, you know, I'm just, it was very exciting. And I do want to mention Dana and Felicia, thank you so much for those who made the comments today. Thank you so much. I always appreciate when community members come out and share their thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bernice. I had the privilege of being able to attend and speak at the New Teachers Orientation a week ago Monday, and it is an exciting time to see new people coming into the district and, and welcome, an opportunity to welcome them, so I'm, I'm very, very glad to have had that opportunity. It's, it's great after two years to have, be back into a more normal routine, shall we say. I also was able to make a brief appearance at the Steyments Career and Learning Academy, that's what Scala stands for, last night. I had a previous engagement, so I missed the food. I hear it was outstanding, since the culinary arts is one of the programs that's presented at, at Scala. And I would point out, as, as Bernice did, that yes, they have a magnificent new basketball floor and gymnasium floor. I hear that other parts of the school district do as well. I think we're going to have to have a board tour of hardwood floors to see what, to see what has been miraculously done over the summer with regard to some of the facilities and the space. I do hear that they need fiberboard backboards for the basketball court, so that's a, that's a new request. And today was outstanding, and I really would like to thank Carmela Prante for putting together the, the programs, the New Teachers Orientation, and also the, the orientation today, and I really think we owe her a round of applause. Orientation is not quite the right word for today. Today was, was Welcome Back Staff Day, and once again, I had the opportunity to say a few words, but the best words, the best things were presented. I want to thank, as I said, Carmela. Juliette Benacristo spoke and, and talked about her role and the role of the SFT. But we had as our keynote speaker, quote-unquote, four Teachers of the Year. We had Kathleen Wiley, Laura Macy, Patricia Woods, and Rick DeCar. And I would recommend to all of you, if you were not in attendance, and I, and I think most of the people here were able to, to look out, look at the video, Be More Dog, because that had a great, a great message for, for taking risks and being challenged and so on. So Be More Dog, it was a cat person, actually, it was a cat learning how to be a dog, and it's, it's, it's a great presentation, and had a message with it as well. I thought their messages were, were terrific. And lastly, we have the right person here, and this man next to me, Anibal Saler. He did a marvelous presentation on welcoming back all of our staff, and, and we presented, he presented about the strategic plan, presented about the reopening plans, the safety concerns we've addressed. I can't even begin to name the number of things that he, that he covered in, in his remarks. So it was, it was a terrific day, a little long one. I'm not quite sure how we scheduled this board meeting tonight, and I'm looking at these people out here and thinking we need to be done with this meeting and get you home for the opening day tomorrow with 9,300 students, give or take. Okay, and the next presentation is by Anibal.
Thank you, Board President.
Thank you, Board President. Chris, you want to? So I want to, again, thank our parents for coming out and speaking. Be the first to tell you, we always have opportunities to improve. We all have some anxiety around bringing our kids back, but I do want to echo the sentiment that we're doing everything we can. We're following all the guidance. We're looking at American Pediatrics Recommendation, CDC, state, and, and all of those guidances. Virtual isn't recommended for kids. It's given the impact of SEL, social emotional, the burden on families trying to work and keep kids home and trying to educate them. And so I, I just don't want to lose sight of that. I honor the anxiety around it. I understand the challenges. We're working really hard, all of our principals, our staff. We spend a lot of time of the day going through protocols, making sure they know to keep monitoring that we're going to keep doing these things. And so we're going to walk this journey together, and the hope is that after tomorrow, your baby will come home and hug you and tell you, Mom, it was a great day, or Dad, it was a great day. And, you know, I want to thank you for trusting us in this process. It has not been easy. Like I told our teachers today, we have first graders who are now third graders who haven't been in the building in over 18 months. So we know we're going to have some things to work on. We have freshmen who are now sophomores that never did their freshman year at the high school. I mean, these are significant things that we have to really honor. And so all of our staff is taking that really serious. There won't be a lot of teaching going on tomorrow. There'll be a lot of, hey, I miss you, I haven't seen you. So I do want to echo the comments of Ms. Story and Ms. Chandler. We're going to work hard and hopefully figure out, and I know there's some needs there, but I do want to make sure that I recognize your voice before I get going. So I'm going to kind of skip through some of these slides just because they're kind of what we always talk about, but I always never want to not share them to the audience because we never know who's new, who's presenting. So, you know, we have our, our mission, our vision, our taglines, our, our strategic plan, our pillars that guide our work as a district. And so we always will highlight these, but I won't spend much time on them because as Board President Kathy Lewis said, for some of us, it's been an extremely long day, and I probably won't sleep anyway because I'm going to be so excited tomorrow to see a lot of happy eyes, right? Because I won't be able to see a lot of happy faces, but. Our mantra has been Schenectady Rising, and that's what we're going to hope to do. We're going to rise up. It's a big challenge for us tomorrow. It's a big day. Again, super excited, nervous, but it's our hope to reopen our schools, reimagine our district. We know we have competition potentially coming into our community, trying to work in our community to serve our kids. So we got to rise up. We have to step up to this challenge and continue to offer high quality programming, safe, high quality programming to our kids. And so that's the hope. I want to welcome everyone back. Tomorrow's the big day. We will be running buses and I'll dig, dig into some transportation stuff because I know that's always on the mind of our board members and our community. But tomorrow's the big day. Our teachers were pumped today. We did four sessions because we couldn't fit everybody in one, trying to be mindful of space and, and not overcrowding. But it was great. It was great. Lot of energy. People were excited, honored to be here. It was my first opening with them. So really a, a great day again. Kudos to Carmella for her leadership and organizing and kudos to our teachers, man. Their stories, their keynote speeches. So I know we recorded it. I know it'll probably get posted online. Our chief communications officer is probably going to work on making sure that gets out there, but if you get an opportunity to watch it, please do. And to echo Board President Kathy Lewis's comments, Be More Dog, hashtag, if you look it up on YouTube, it's a great video. It's about a cat deciding to take some risks in his life to be more like a dog and really look at life a little bit different, step up to some challenges, you know, seize the day. Carpe diem means seize the frisbee or something.
Seize the frisbee.
So it was really cool, good humor.
Grab the frisbee.
Yeah, grab the frisbee, yeah. So, you know, I just want to, you know, we're excited. Teachers were pumped to be back. We gave them two days to be in their classrooms. So I think having us come together, the reverse flip was a really good approach. So some key updates, new teacher orientation. We brought on board about 100 new staff members in a variety of areas. We continue to keep filling some of those gaps. We heard that we have some shortages. So if you know someone looking for an opportunity to work, you know, we have positions from custodial, paraprofessionals, teaching, you know, we have some in administration as well. So we continue to try to fill the gap. Everyone's working hard. Everyone's having some challenges in every community. That's nothing that's just about Schenectady. Superintendent's Conference, again, update, great day today. We did three days. We did one on the first and then two this week on the 7th and the 8th. And we gave teachers and our principals time in their building. That's a big change. We did not like have them do 17 different professional developments. We literally said to our staff, we haven't been, you haven't been in the building in 18 months, you need to spend time in your building. Get ready for our children, get ready for our kids to come in, get ready to greet parents outside, welcome them, be excited. And so they did that. I think they did a great job. And so I also want to thank our O&amp;M staff who've been working tirelessly to make sure our buildings are ready. I want to thank our secretaries. I didn't thank them earlier. You always miss a group, right? And that's the one group unfortunately I missed, so I want to thank them publicly because we know that they are the crux, the spinal cord of every building is a, is a secretary. They run, they manage the office, they do all of that stuff. So I want to make sure we thank them. But yeah, everyone's been fantastic in the opening. Want to talk about presentation to city council. So was able to present to city council yesterday, was able to have my team join me. I think I saw a potential candidate in the audience earlier for city council. I know Damani's a potential candidate for city council as well, so it was really powerful. First time, they were thrilled to have the superintendent there. They told me it was the first time, at least President Mutu Veran told me the first time the district ever went to city council to present, to obviously extend themselves and to figure out how, ways we can collaborate, how we can share services, how we can do things better for our kids and our community, whether it's facilities, whether it's sharing technology, they're doing public Wi-Fi. How do we build on that network so that we kind of remove some of these barriers around instruction and engagement and enrichment? So we're going to continue to have those conversations and, you know, I'll be supporting city council president on Saturday going to Caribbean Day. So if you have an opportunity to join us, hopefully I'll see you out there. I heard there's going to be some good entertainment and some great food, so I'm looking forward to it.
Central Park, right?
Yep, sorry, Central Park. I think it starts at 11 o'clock if I, if my memory serves me correctly. Couple other items, American Rescue Plan update. It is due at the end of the month. I know some board members had some questions. We're continuing to work away on the feedback from all of our buildings, putting that together. And we'll be bringing, hopefully that buttoned up on the 22nd so the board can see how we're going to kind of allocate some of those dollars in the system. Again, $41 million over four years. So again, not $41 million every year, but over four years. So it's about, you know, $10 million that we'll get every year. And again, there was allocations for what they call learning loss. I don't like to call it learning loss, but more like miss learning.
Unfinished learning is what I learned.
That's right, that's the new one.
Is what I learned.
And so, you know, we're going to talk about that, potential opportunities for looking at our facilities and obviously programming. But again, the emphasis is on non-reoccurring expenses, so I want to emphasize that. This is a one-time injection into supporting our district, and so we want to make sure we're strategic on non-reoccurring expenses so we don't have a burden that we have to pick up with our general fund in our budget. Do want to emphasize, the governor made an announcement last week. It's not even an announcement, it's just written in, it's an executive order from the Department of Health about staff being required to be vaccinated and weekly testing. We're still waiting for some, like, how do we make this happen in our buildings from our county health department? I know they're working on an agreement with a vendor, and so it has not necessarily materialized in practice, but we will be starting human resources, we'll be working with them, we'll be working with our collective bargaining units to make sure we honor, have a system that honors people's personal choice, but ultimately keeps us in compliance with vaccination and weekly testing. And so it is a tough topic, unfortunately, but the hope is that most of our staff are vaccinated. It's a moot point, but if they're not, or they're going to be subject to weekly testing. And this is everybody in the schoolhouse, not just teachers. This will be paraprofessionals, administrators, everybody will be subject to this protocol. And again, this is about safety, right? So we know if you're vaccinated, you can still carry, but you're going to be less likely to be severely sick. And so that's the expectation here. And then I want to just provide a general transportation update. One, first is the phone number. It's always important on the first day, so I want to make sure this is on my slide because everybody always asks, what's the number of transportation? So 518-370-8103. If you have an issue tomorrow morning, call the number. Be conscious though, there may be, there may be some issues, multiple. So you may not get somebody right away, leave a message. They're going to be working the phones. That's coming from our supervisor, Al, but they will be working on the issues. Do want to provide some updates on it. We're very tight with drivers, but we're thankful that we are able to schedule all of our runs. Some of our routes may need to piggyback on them, so there may be some slight delays potentially just because they do double runs between the schools. So be conscious of that. Again, call the number. We do have an app that you could watch it, you know, if you download the app. Forgot the actual name of the app, but I do know we have like a track finder or something like that that we use, that you can use it for the busing. The, the biggest challenge for us is that we're getting a lot of last minute address changes. So families, please be, be patient with us if one of your addresses changed and we were still trying to accommodate. We'll be able to accommodate it, but we want you to know that it has a domino effect, right? Because now the route may need to change. And so we're still getting some of those changes, but everything should be in our system, hopefully as of last Friday, and then whatever we've gotten no later than this Friday will be adjusted into the system. And so just know that it's an ongoing cycle. They're working there now. They're working, still registering kids to the families that have shown up, so we want to make sure that all that stuff is in place. The other piece I want to mention was our CDTA pilot. We're excited. High school has gotten information on the pilot. We have about 500 students participating in the pilot, and that was a question that had come to me. Again, most of the parents who we've been in contact, we haven't had anybody really say like, I don't want my child on the CDTA. They've been excited that there's some additional flexibility with the transportation in terms of like, hey, I don't got to pick them up, they can just take the CDTA home if they get sent home or if they got to run to an appointment. That's been really positive. They also are going to have the information posted on the CDTA website, so I want to make sure that there's a specific link for that. We'll make sure we put that on our website, on the high school page specifically. So our parents, when they go to the high school page, we'll make sure we add that. But again, remember the routes are going to be color coded, so they'll have the name on the, on the outside of the routes. And so just want to make sure I bring that up as well.
I heard some exciting news about preschool and transportation. Previously, preschool didn't have transportation, and some of our providers were really excited that preschoolers now have an option for transportation and parents were excited too.
Yeah, so there are kids wherever they go, so our CBOs, we are providing transportation. And again, credit to Al, credit to Carmella, they work really hard. It has been a process for pre-K, but every, even our CBOs, so thank you for bringing that up, Board Member Jamaica Miles, that we are able to transport more pre-K students because they are kids. It doesn't matter if they go to CBO or not, they're still responsible. So thank you for mentioning that as well.
And CBO stands for?
Community Based Organization, so my apologies. Thought that was.
Apple Net Soup.
Sometimes in education, you learn these acronyms, you forget, not everyone knows them. So I want to just shift quickly to reopening. Schenectady Strong, again, we've made the commitment to be safe to the best ability we can. I can't guarantee anything 100% and I never would do that, but please know we're conscious, we're doing the best we can. We have paras, custodial staff, administrators, teachers, all doing their part to make sure we're, you know, they're wiping stuff down or they're, make sure kids are wearing their masks, providing mask breaks strategically so that kids could have an opportunity going outside when they can, making sure if we can be six feet apart, that's a goal, that's a better standard than three. Again, really working at it. And then if they're not, really working on 100% mask. These documents are on our website, and I want to make sure that parents know that and community, anybody who may be watching online at home. The biggest and most important ones that I say are the layered mitigation strategies, which is the colored chart. The graphic one is just a graphical representation of what's in the layered mitigation and kind of the best practices, which is the middle chart. And then the, the one I think is the most important is the contact, the students. So you can know how contact tracing works, real important. And that's important because it lets you know that, you know, if yes here, then you move on to this piece of here. So it helps us and helps parents know that if your child is sitting here and a kid happens to be positive, it's a six foot radius, this is who would get quarantined, who wouldn't. Again, if they're masked, they're less likely to get quarantined. And so those are the things that we want to make sure that we continue to emphasize and work with our families. Again, I wouldn't be honest if I told you everything was going to go well. So today, in our opening day, my talk with staff, I said, choose a line. What do you, how you think the year is going to go? And so it was a quiz, everyone passed it, they all chose the bottom one. So the reality is we know we're going to have some ups and some downs, but the goal is that we continue to move forward together. We work through them, we work with our parents as partners, knowing that there's going to be better days than others. But the goal here is that your children are in school, learning, we're feeding them breakfast, lunch, they're in safe environments with caring adults, and hopefully, super excited to be back and tired of looking potentially at a screen and, and, you know, it's just not the same feeling. Want to also give a shout out again to our communication, our superintendent's brief. If you're not getting this, please reach out to the district, we can sign you up. It is a way for us to communicate. Every Friday it comes out, and we try to highlight our students, highlight our staff. I try to always provide an update. Again, our chief communication officer, Karen, has done a phenomenal job. She spearheads this for us. And it's our level of transparency, make sure the teachers get it, our board members get it, our parents get it. Everyone gets the same message so that there's some consistency in here. And again, I just want to say thank you to everybody. This has been, for me, it's a labor of love because I love what I do, but it has been arduous. It's been late nights, it's been folks coming in over the Labor Day weekend when they shouldn't have been, right? Because it's a Labor Day, we recognize those folks in that labor, but they did whatever they can to make sure that tomorrow is as best as possible for our children. And so I'm really excited to welcome them back. And so I want to show the board the video we showed today in the presentation, a Welcome Back video.
Welcome back, teacher. We miss being at school in person so much. A year and a half is such a long time to be apart. This school year is going to be the best one yet.
Everyone, as part of our Schenectady family, just want to welcome you back to the school year.
We're working extra hard to ensure that we have a safe and exciting year together.
We've missed you. We can't wait to see you. We're going to have an exciting school year.
We have a lot of great things that we cannot wait to share with you.
It's so amazing that we're going to be able to be back together, learning in person in a safe way.
What did you miss most about school last year?
My friends.
Socializing.
My teacher.
Recess in cafeteria.
Ms. G, Ms. Borden, and Ms. Rocker and Ms. Nelson.
Mr. Strong and my friends.
What are you most excited about to go back to school in person this year?
I'm excited to stay longer in school and play with more kids.
No screens.
Dating with my friends.
No mute buttons.
No disconnection.
That's right, we'll be connected all the time, which is something that I'm really looking forward to, is getting to see everybody in person and looking in their eyes.
Gym, art, and music.
Getting to see and interact with my students in real life. I've missed them so much, and I've missed my colleagues.
My friends and Ms. Curtis.
I'm so excited to start the new school year back in the classroom.
My favorite two teachers, Russ Brucini and Ms. Rocker.
See you soon.
Learning with all my friends and seeing all my teachers.
I want to see my new friends and my new teachers.
I can't wait to get back to school.
I'm excited to see everyone in school.
Hope I have a good school year. Hope you do too.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Terrific. I think we should go back in two weeks and see what they say. No. After two weeks of being there. Have you finished?
Yeah, and again, just want to thank everybody. And again, thank you, our parents, for trusting us in this process. I know it hasn't been easy, but hopefully after the next couple of days, some of the I know it hasn't been easy, but hopefully after the next couple of days, some of the anxiety will settle a little bit, and we'll start getting back into the groove safely for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we have a resolution approving a professional development plan for the Schenectady City School District. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second.
Second, Erica.
Erica. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment. For new board members, this is done every single year, that the professional development plan is submitted, and then we as a board have to approve it.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. The NISBA Annual Convention is coming up, October 24th to 26th, but they're doing the business meeting October 18th. This is a, we have a resolution appointing the voting delegate to the 2021 Annual Convention of the New York State School Boards Association, and that appointment is moi. So I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, I got Prinsella and Noelani. Any discussion? I think you'll be able to watch it if you want. It's on screen. Is this every year? Every year. The New York State School Board Convention is held in October, has been held in October every year as long as I've been associated in. And the business meeting has usually been on a Saturday morning, or at least the last morning of the convention. And this year, because of the arrangements and the fact that many delegates felt that they really wanted to attend the sessions because they're excellent breakout sessions, they decided to pull the business aspects of it out ahead of time and do that virtually. We need over 200 districts across the state of New York to vote in the business session in order to determine the direction of NISBA for the next year, so that's what it relates to.
And Kathy, isn't it correct, usually is the president who is voted as the delegate?
Usually the president, it could be, it could be one of you other. I'll happily defer at some point. I think I'm going to be on the screen three or four more hours, so. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a policy update. I request that we waive the first reading of Policy 6110 and proceed directly to its adoption. May I have a motion to approve the waiver? So moved. Prinsella, second?
Second, Erica.
Erica. Any discussion?
Is there a reason why we're waiving it, like why there's a rush to adopt the changes?
We felt that we needed to, it's basically the changes are the incorporation of the word agent in there, and it was recommended by, I believe, an audit from special ed that we incorporate that word in there in order to cover all circumstances within the district, perhaps.
Yeah, and I would just, so we included in the board pack, you see the actual highlight, the only change is the additional word agent. The reason why we had asked for kind of expedited, again, during the transition, I think this should have been done last year. And so trying to catch up on some of those things because we don't want to get audited again and get cited for some of the same language. So some of it had to do with change of leadership, and kind of this kind of fell off on the wayside. So that's really the biggest request.
And there's also the enforcement section that was changed. And I saw that, I see that the whole thing is highlighted, is that that section did not exist before or that the language has completely changed?
So my understanding is that that's brand-new to the entire policy, again, as a result of the audit. And it had to do with special education, so anybody who was representing the district, and again, that's where the word agent comes from. So to make sure that the kids are protected, so that we can't say, "Well, it wasn't the district, it was an agent," so we wanted to add that language in there.
Within special ed?
Correct, with enforcement, right. And so the enforcement is important because we're, again, trying to protect folks. And so when we have this language in here, that a school official is alleged violating it, again, even an agent of the school official, there needs to be some, the ability to make, take action. And so we'll investigate that report. When that language is not there and we contract out, you know, people try to hide behind, "Well, it wasn't the district employee, it was an agent." And so the goal is to try to clean that up so we can hold people accountable whenever something is reported.
Have consistency.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Kathy, we didn't really get anybody to motion and second. I did, I, oh, that's the waiver, I'm sorry. The waiver, we hadn't voted the waiver yet.
Right, we were voting the waiver.
Okay, voting the waiver, all in favor, with 6-0, I'm going to count it that way. I had Prinsella and Erica do it, now we'll do the resolution formally adopting 6110. And that's as we've discussed. So may I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Noelani?
Second, Jamaica.
Okay, and Jamaica. Any further discussion? I guess we jumped the discussion to the resolution itself first, so. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have our resolution approving the placement of certain special education pupils. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice?
Second, Noelani.
Noelani. All those in favor, or any discussion about it, first of all? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, we have personnel items. We have a resolution approving consent items 9A1 to 9B3 concerning certain personnel actions. I'll accept a motion to approve these items.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice? Second. Prinsella? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that, those resolutions carry. We have Resolution 9B4, requiring a waiver of the 48-hour rule with regard to the appointment of an Assistant Director of English Language Arts. May I have a motion to approve this waiver? So moved.
Second, Noelani.
That was Prinsella and Noelani. Okay. I should mention that the new person is Rebecca Gleason. And there she is. Thank you for coming.
Welcome.
All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries as well.
I think that was the waiver.
Oh, once again, I'm ahead of myself.
Sorry, we got a few of those now.
I'm on the waiver, that was the waiver. It's been a long day. So the waiver has passed, and we will now go to the resolution itself, appointing Rebecca Gleason as the Assistant Director of English Language Arts. A motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Okay, I'll put Noelani first this time and Prinsella second. We welcome you. All those in favor, once again, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Where do you come to us from, Rebecca?
I've been helping education for about twenty-two years. I'm a volunteer in the department of art at school. So I'm interested in my passion for education. And there are...
Excellent.
She was, she's being modest, she was also a high school principal, very successful high school principal. And so she's going to bring a wealth of experience. I believe Shawma was the school district, or?
Oh, Kennedy.
Kennedy, okay, yeah.
Kennedy Jarry?
Kennedy Jarry, yeah, yeah.
A little further west.
I'm learning these communities, so.
A little further west.
I've been a long time in this community, so I see a lot of other kids.
Welcome. All right, we have Resolution 9B5, requiring a waiver, we're going to do this right this time, of the waiver of the 48-hour rule with regard to the approval of the employment agreement between the Schenectady City School District and Dr. Loretta D. Chisholm as the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. May I have a motion to approve this waiver?
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second? Second. Prinsella? All those in favor of the waiver, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, and now we have Resolution 9B5, approving Dr. Loretta D. Chisholm as the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second.
Noelani? And we welcome Dr. Loretta Chisholm. I know she's sitting over here, she came in earlier, and we'll take a brief moment after to meet all of these people who have attended tonight after our meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Where do you come from, Dr. Chisholm? Wonderful, wonderful.
And so I did share with the board the announcement, obviously, knowing that it was going to be up for consideration. There's a little bit of background information on Dr. Chisholm, but really excited to bring her on board. She's done some work with school review, accountability, she's been a principal, she's taught, been a professor, she's done a lot of work on culturally relevant curriculum, education. So we're real excited, and I think it's, again, adding to the things that are important for us as a district, important for me and my cabinet, where we have strong leadership, both for men, women, diversity. And so for me, it's a great addition, I think it's going to be really powerful for our kids. And so congratulations, Loretta, and welcome to Schenectady.
Excellent, thank you. We have Resolution 9B6, requiring a waiver of the 48-hour rule with regard to the approval of the employment agreement between the Schenectady City School District and Deborah A. Marriott as the interim chief of human resources. May I have a motion to approve this waiver?
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second, Erica.
Erica? And all those in favor of the waiver, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Now we have Resolution 9B6 itself, approving Deborah Marriott as the interim chief of human resources. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. So moved. Prinsella, second? I'll do it. Any discussion? We are doing this in order to...
Yeah, twofold. One is, we need to keep the position filled, her contract was going to be up. And so I want to make sure we maintain consistency in terms of hiring, who's been helping us. And in terms of my priorities, I don't want to make a change in human resources right now. And so Deb has graciously allowed, accepted to stay on board, so we need to appoint her as interim so that we can continue to get the waiver from the state, and she can continue to work. But that's an area that we will work to fill, but we're going to wait until we get through the hiring and some of that stuff. And so it'll be a to-do kind of later in the year. So thank you, Deb, for willing to stay on board.
And as you can see, we've had quite a number of people she's been bringing here to us, so it's been an important role. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. And I don't know, has everyone met Deb? Deb, wave your hand. I hope everybody has because you've been with us now for three or four months, I think. We have Resolution 9B7, requiring a waiver of the 48-hour rule again with regard to the appointment of an Assistant Principal of Student Engagement and Attendance. May I have a motion to approve that waiver?
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second, Erica.
Erica? All those in favor, please say aye. This is the waiver. Aye. Thank you. And that carries. And then we have Resolution 9B7, approving Assistant Principal of Student Engagement and Attendance. And that's in the Office of Students' Support Services. Please note the change in the office title, it used to be Pupil Personnel Services, it's now Students' Support Services. And that person being appointed is Jason Belknap. There's Jason back there, thank you. We do look forward to meeting everybody. So I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Prinsella and Noelani. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And we welcome Jason.
Just some clarity, this will be working out of the high school. Obviously, chronic absenteeism is one of our priorities, so we have put some personnel behind this work. To really be working the data, obviously, ultimately, they'll roll up to Andrea, but they're going to spend a lot of time with our high school kids, making sure we attack that chronic absenteeism, get our kids through and through, so thank you.
Okay, great.
Welcome to all of you.
We now have our business items. We have a resolution accepting the treasurer's report for the month ended July 31st, 2021. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. So moved. Prinsella, second?
Second, Bernice.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Just one brief interruption, some my apologies, I missed this, this is my oversight. Trevor Tripp, who was on the consent agenda items, is going to be our new Assistant Director of Science in the Office of Teaching and Learning. So we're going to be, again, filling our content areas so that we have pre-K to 12 alignment with our curriculum areas. So again, Trevor, welcome to Schenectady.
Welcome, Trevor.
Sorry about that, I forgot.
I had an opportunity to meet him this morning, yes, actually.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution accepting the central treasurer's report on extra classroom activity accounts for the month ended July 31st, 2021. May I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Noelani? Uh huh, second? I'll do it. Are you all there with me here? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a resolution authorizing the refund of certain taxes pursuant to certain court orders. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Erica.
I missed it. Erica?
Yes.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Bernice.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes. We also have another resolution approving the agreement between the Schenectady City School District and Weston Company CPAs. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. I'll make it. Kathy? Second. Prinsella? And I will point out that the Weston Company does our internal auditing. They are internal auditors, not our external auditors. And we have had them since New York State had changed the law, I think around 2006, something like that, 2007, I believe, in order to comply with that aspect of the New York State law. All those in favor of that resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. We have a resolution approving the agreement between the Schenectady City School District and Magdugle. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice. Second, Noelani.
And Noelani? Any discussion?
Question, this is specifically for Spanish translation. Does that mean we have separate service for other types of translation?
Yes, so Andrea, you can maybe just speak to that, but we do have translation services available.
Yeah, we use a variety of different methods for translation. We've got Lexicate, we've got in-person translators, so there's a process in the district. If you need a document translated, if you need a translator at a meeting or a home visit, they submit, and we arrange for that to happen. So this is just one of our folks getting them lined up to be able to tap into to dispatch them out.
But it's a request system, so typically, we hope the schools are a little bit proactive so we can get them a person or a document translated, and so there's a variety of things, but all languages.
Right, okay.
All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that carries. We have a resolution awarding a contract as a result of a request for proposal for universal pre-K. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice?
Second. Noelani?
Noelani? Any discussion? These three, I believe there were three on the list, are in addition to other CBOs that we approved a meeting or two ago, so just to clarify. Is there going to be a list of all the pre-K on our site, of all the sites?
Yeah, we can add it, I believe there's 11 providers or so, six, okay.
Six at the moment, yeah, six at the moment, yeah.
Including our pre-K sites, I was getting excited. But we can put them on there if that's helpful, we can list them, our pre-K providers. But thank you for approving this because tomorrow's the first day, so we want to make sure we can pay them for providing services. So thank you for this.
I like the idea of it being on our website, because if there are parents moving into our district that have preschoolers, then they also have that information.
We actually, I don't know how many slots we have right now. We did have originally something in the neighborhood of 275, I thought, but I don't know what the number is at the moment.
We have some slots left open at Yates, and we have some slots left open at our pre-K at Ben Cordier, but they're hampered, so. But other than that, they're pretty full, and at Mostland CBO too. I think maybe one or two CBOs, we may not be running out of capacity quite yet, but pretty close.
Total number? Total number of pre-K students?
So we want not four for our grand, we want 201, it's probably around 308.
Good, I'm glad to hear the number is up.
Universal pre-K for all?
I think that, it used to be that that would have been about half of the number of kindergartners we would have expected, so we still have some room in terms of seeking more UPK. Okay, all those in favor of the resolution for universal pre-K sites, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a resolution awarding a contract as a result of a bid for envelopes. This has always been one of my favorite resolutions. And it's really shorter than it used to be, you cannot appreciate those, those of you who were not here. It used to be about 10 pages long and we had every color from salmon to swordfish listed. So I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution on envelopes. So moved. Prinsella?
Second.
Second? Noel Lonnie? Any discussion besides mine of the colors of the envelopes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have quite a lot tonight. We have a resolution awarding a contract as a result of a bid for copy paper. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved. Second Bernice.
Was that Prinsella on the first?
It was Bernice.
Oh, Bernice, I got Bernice first, I need a second?
Erica.
Okay, sorry. Any, any discussion regarding copy paper?
Here's all your colors.
Sorry, I was ahead of myself on the envelopes, okay.
Just a quick question, so, cuz I know in the past, this has been a, an interesting conversation, you know, with the paper. So where's, the paper is housed in, at Mount Pleasant?
Yeah. Yeah, we've done things a little different, I know Terrence here, but she can speak to that, but we've done things a little different, we've been central, but we've actually started to deploy out to the schools. And so that way is a little bit quicker response, but yes. And then we also use the IT department implemented PaperCut, so we can try to keep track of our counter, which is a software program, lets us know how many impressions each of our copiers is doing. Prints out these fancy reports so we know which schools need what and, you know, so we can get a better sense. But yes, we have central and then we're kinda decentralizing a little bit to be more quicker to the schools.
Okay, thank you.
It's starting over, as we talked about today, everything is starting over. All those in favor of the bid for copy paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a resolution awarding a contract as a result of a request for proposal for pool resurfacing at the high school. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. So moved. Prinsella, second? Second, I'll second it. And I talked with one of the swim coaches today and he said it's coming along nicely, the pool is, we had a bit of a problem a year ago, so this, this is, this is a good thing to be doing for the pool. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a resolution accepting the donation of 47 pairs of running shoes given by Fleet Feet of Albany. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second Noel Lonnie?
Noel Lonnie? We all say thank you. To Fleet Feet. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. We also have a resolution accepting the donation of two trumpets given by Don March of Schenectady. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second.
Prinsella? And I, once again, we thank the contributor, Don March, and you know, I really can't emphasize enough how dependent the school district is on the donation of instruments. We, generally speaking, have had funds raised oftentimes by our Friends of Music organization to refurbish the instruments, but the basic instruments, we're very dependent on, on the contributions. So we thank anyone who has an instrument in their attic that they'd like to donate, we're available.
And just thank you to the number of community members and groups that make all of the donations because it does show how we really are in community with community organizations, that they think of us when they consider who they're gonna donate to. And it's a benefit to our students and to the community relationships that we build.
Thank you. All those in favor of this resolution concerning trumpets, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. At this time, we have a second opportunity for any comments from board members.
I just quickly wanted to also mention, the principal of Scala is Gregory Fields. So I mean, that's a huge piece and I apologize, but Gregory Fields was there, he was moving around, working really hard, so I appreciate that, I appreciate all the work that he's done for Scala as well.
And I was able to see Gregory after the, the meeting today, the welcome back session, and he reported to me that he had received 400 chairs at 7:30 this morning. And so now he's in good shape because he had the deaths before and now he has chairs on which people can sit tomorrow, so that's really good news.
Two things, one echoing what a couple people have mentioned, our teachers and staff have been working overtime to get our buildings open. One of my children is starting at Zaller and knowing that people were working on Labor Day, that they were using trucks to move physical furniture and just really committed to making sure our kids have a strong start, it's, it's so appreciated. I'm never surprised by the commitment, but definitely wanna publicly appreciate it. And then also, I know that Anibal has been working with the Schenectady Department of Health, ensuring that there's that two-way communication to have as much information as possible and look for ways to, to keep our families and our children safe. And I'm, I know you've got more stuff that's gonna be coming up with them, so parents, please open up every child folder, read those emails, look on the website for any updates that are coming out so that you can stay informed. And then if you have a question, gosh, just reach out to your principal, to your classroom teacher and make sure, cuz people want you to ask and they're there to answer those questions, so we'll all get through tomorrow.
Anyone else? I would just like to say that I'm most appreciative of what everyone in the district is and has been doing and I really want to get you people home so that you can get up in about five hours essentially. And, and so we're, we're glad about that and, and I really hope that we have, that we don't have a stop and go year. I, I know how that, that was still continuous, that, that, that drawing from A to B. So I'm anxious to see that we, we have that. All right, at this point, we are calling an executive session for the purpose of discussing the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second Noel Lonnie?
Noel Lonnie? And we'll meet in the commons. Is there any discussion of that? All in favor, please say aye.